I think we're good. Good, thank you. All right, welcome everyone to our special board meeting, July 30th, 2025 of the Summersworth School Board. We just made quorum, four members out of seven, so here we are. Can I have a call, roll call please?
Maggie Larson.
Yes.
Carrie Clark. Sarah O'Brien-Hart.
Yes.
Crystal D. St. Croix. Marsha Brown. Bridgette Jameson.
Yep.
Carly Prescott.
All right, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any comments by visitors this evening? Thank you. Any comments by visitors? Seeing none. Any initial comments by board members? Anything? Okay, seeing none. We'll go into agenda item number three, 3.1, our consideration and approval of end-of-year balance expenditures. Hand it over to the superintendent and business administrator.
I'm going to let our business administrator, Katie, walk through the items, but just by way of a reminder, unanticipated revenue must be returned to the city. We sought permission for the city to include $200,000 of unanticipated revenue in next year's budget. We're probably going to have about $120,000-ish more. Katie, give the exact number of unanticipated revenue that will be returned to the city. It's the unexpended funds that we're looking at tonight. You'll recall that in June, we got approval to spend on an array of technological needs, unexpended funds that we conservatively estimated at that time. And we've been fortunate that now we have current numbers, about $120,000 of which we're recommending spending. The books aren't closed yet, of spending maybe $90,000 to $100,000 of things that are necessary and needed of a capital nature. Reminder that we can't do staff positions or next year expenditures, it has to be things of a capital, multi-year nature. And I'll let Katie walk through what we're proposing, one of the items I'll talk a little bit more about. Thanks, Katie.
So John took most of the memo away, so I'm just going to focus on the bottom section of the memo that we provided for the items. So the first one is upgrades to our security camera servers for $20,000. A lot of our servers are glitching out and when they're recording and not capturing things, so this would do upgrades to the servers so that it prevent those glitches that would happen with our camera system.
Just a quick question to that. Is that per school or is that district-wide?
I believe it's the server, so I think it's, yeah, for all of them.
Great, thank you.
And then the next two are the fire panel upgrades for Idlehurst and the high school. So for the high school, this is a need. It's going to happen whether we take it from last year's balance or this year, we're going to have to do it. All year last year, it has been just failing. It's old, it's 15 years. Both of these fire panels are 15 years old. The components that are in the fire panel are end of life and there's no replacing the parts anymore. It's getting to be that we just can't do it. So Idlehurst is still functioning, but again, it's going to be in the same position as the high school if we don't do these upgrades to them. So I spoke to Jay and he said it's basically taking the main components within the fire panel and upgrading them so that we, it's secure, safe, and we'll be able to get parts to replace if we need to. The district website overhaul, 20,000 to 25,000. Again, John's going to go into more detail on that one. The next two are just two additional tech items that we've noticed that we needed since you approved the last round of technology. So the first one is neoprene protective sleeves for the Chromebooks that we purchased. If we're going to be sending them home with students, we want them protected so that it will be, you know, the value will stay with the Chromebook, so that's $3,500 to purchase those.
Is that for all the Chromebooks that would be going home?
I believe it's the high school ones that will be going home.
Right, and the middle school ones will not be going home.
Will not be going home, so we're not going to purchase for those.
Thank you.
These are under $10.
A piece, yeah.
Great.
And then the last one is two additional of the ClearTouch interactive displays that we purchased, so we're going to purchase two additional units.
Anything on any of those further? The district website, so the idea here would be with strategic plan and direction, including that North Star document that we visited the retreat, here's where the district is, here was where the district headed, especially in line with all of those things. And given that we are fundamentally under attack from our own federal government and from the state government in many ways, and looking at open enrollment and EFA vouchers and homeschooling without much accountability, enrollment becomes, is, you know, we're here to serve the kids that enroll in our schools, but we also don't want to be losing kids that are missing out on a public education in Summersworth that if they had better understood and the reputation of our school district that we have well-earned and deserved and will continue to earn and deserve as we move forward in pretty aggressive ways, that the communication piece of that is pretty critical. So the website was already on the to-do list. I was hoping that when I first arrived a year ago, that we maybe would spend $5,000 to kind of update it, something simple, something powerful, something that if you land on as a prospective resident of Summersworth with children, and you're looking at Dover, and you're looking at Summersworth, and you're looking at Rollinsford and Rochester, and maybe Elliott and Portsmouth and wherever, that landing page and some really solid materials about who we are as a district, get your attention very clearly that we are doing bold, powerful things here, and it's very positive, easy to maintain, easy to manage, easy to navigate, clear, everything that our website should be at a simple, basic level, but really a powerful message. And that maybe we could do a little bit better in terms of conversation with city council and the mayor earlier about materials about the district that belong in our real estate offices, so that when folks are looking, you know, various places that we could have some good materials in that way. And in this day and age, a four or five-page printed material on a website are just kind of, geez, it's social media and everything else that's out there. But maybe if those are kind of the anchors, this is our message, this is who we are, and all of our school websites and all of our social media and all of our communications kind of flow from a very positive, tight, powerful message about who we are and what we do, that might be helpful. And I have always put it like, meh, there's something more important to do, there's something more important to do, there's something more important to do. And we left it out of the last round because I was like, meh, there's more important things to do. The last thing I'll say is I was meeting with Jerry Frew, who's the New Hampshire School Administrators Association legislative point person about 10 days ago, kind of really running through what's happening right now at the state level to go with the federal level. And public school is bleeding dollars and enrollment in so many different ways. I feel like we probably need to spend some money to make sure we're doing our absolute best. Some of that's data, most of it is substance and program and who we are, but I think we need to better communicate it. And maybe it's less than that, but I think it might be website and materials. I talked to Katie, I said, can we, can that go in there from audit perspective, you know, that we're going to do some one-time expenditures to kind of get our materials and our PR caught up? And Katie said the answer is yes to that. So it might be the two together somewhere in that ballpark, and we could fine-tune that detail if it were approved tonight along, you know, tight motion.
Yeah, Bridgette?
I, I'm not sure if I misheard. How did we get from five at the beginning to 2025?
The, I spoke with our tech department, our NewView folks and said, can I do something for $5,000? And Tim Martin, who's the leader of NewView, gave me three people to talk to and kind of said, simple, basic, we'll even do the data migration on our own. And the cheapest anybody came in, that was close to 20. So my hope of spending less seemed to be unrealistic. You can spend $75,000 plus on a website. I'm imagining, I'm thinking we can do it for 10 to 15, but I'd hate to get the okay for 10 and then find out we need 11. So if we had a little bit of a cushion, some of it goes unspent, or we do communications. Does that make sense? Yeah.
All right. So I've been around too long. I remember when the website was very simple. And I just pulled up my emails from years ago of asking for the new website. It was in 2021. We spent six, about $16,000 on it then. I also think that we need a better website, but I don't know if it's the overhaul of the function, but more of kind of the update of the content. And I think that part of that too, and I spoke with John, just kind of what we, kind of for the community, I think my piece coming here and my advocacy and reaching out to folks is what can we, what can we expend within our audit range for students? You know, what else can we do? And it's tricky. It's tricky to be able to like spend for students that's not for the next year or for this year, and it's summer, and what can we do? And I don't know the answers for like the granular what to buy, what would it be, but for athletics, for music and the arts is really what I would focus on having and ask what could be multi-year, right? What would be a multi-year purchase for our extracurriculars for our students and to put some money into that? And then for the, you know, in regard to the website and the marketing, I think photos of our students, current photos. We've had some great photographers that have just, you know, done things for free, but printing of those photos for the high school, getting photos done for, again, curriculars, for the athletics, music and the arts, to just bolster that. What else can we do to bolster that? We always look for, it's kind of the last thing, but they don't really have money, you know, for, we don't have a lot to contribute for expenditures from instruments to kind of some conditioning equipment. The boosters are responsible for paying for the officials. I wish we could do that, but we can't because it's for next year. I don't know if we could reimburse that, but that would be something that would really help students not go have to go door-to-door and raise $500, $600. It's just a barrier. We've looked at to eradicate pay-to-play a lot of years, and I think it's between, you know, it's 30, 40, $50,000 to do that. We've never had that ability, and it's just such a barrier in our community to either have to pay or have to fundraise. And I was just looking to lessen that more for the student side. Yep. O'Brien-Hart?
I just had a website thought. The question, well, is this mostly looking at community-facing? Is there a staff-facing component? Is that something that's different, like that is not part of this, like the website upgrade? What year did you say was the last time?
2021. I don't have it, I don't have it.
Okay.
It was my request years ago.
No, I mean, I honestly, it really needs. I mean, it needs to be done, especially with like the need for communication and stuff, so like I'm totally on board with that. But I just am wondering if there's going to be, like, is, because my agency uses like a staff-side portal and then we use, we have a public-facing website, so just kind of wondering the setup of all that.
The multiple platforms piece and where we are right now, PowerSchool is our student information system, and we have, we're trying to tighten that up, and now we're bringing in iReady as our new assessment platform, as we've discussed in the past. Typically, and we have our high school teacher here right now, the multiple platforms is typically what happens, you go in a lot of different places. I don't know if it's realistic in this day and age, but I like the idea that all parents, all students, all teachers would start at the school website, and you would have links right there to the key things. So any messaging you want to get across to parents, students, families, it makes the SAU 56 website as a starting place more relevant, and you've got all the schools right there, and you have PowerSchool and other portals there as well. I don't know if that is where we will land, because there are multiple platforms that folks are coming into. But I do like the fact that we potentially have an anchor. And to the school board chair's question, I did talk to the business administrator about the pay-to-play thing, and I think unfortunately, at this moment with these dollars, we can't do anything. I think it's a matter of moving forward, and as we look at putting forward, we'll be looking at a multi-year strategic budget this next go-around, not the year at a time with, you know, I know the CIP and other things are there, but I think that would be the time to say, how do we get $50,000 in the budget, annual operating budget, to pay for referees and do things that otherwise the boosters and the kids are running around getting money for or paying out of pocket?
I'm on board with the website. I'm hoping that we have a plan like Chairperson Larson, I love saying that, sorry, said to keep the content up and relevant and not just like kind of do like, oh, you know, like a bam, this is it forever. I think that the marketing piece of it is important. I am not even remotely a money person. Is there like any, can you like, can you like, I don't know, Katie, can like things be like put in trust for athletics or something? She's shaking her head sadly at me.
Well, they could, but you'd have to create that fund with the, you'd have to go through the process, create a fund with the city to put funds in. We used to have a special ed one that we had.
Oh, okay.
It ended up getting closed because there was never a mechanism to spend it, because there was always confusion about when you could dip into that, because if we had money available in our budget to spend, why would we dip into that if we had funds like year-end balance? And then there's always a supplemental appropriation route that you can go and ask for additional funds, so that fund went away. But there are ways to do that, you would just have to do it through the city. So it's not something I can, we can do today.
Yeah.
But it could be something in the future you could look at. If we had year-end fund balance, you could put it into town form of government does that with Warren articles, they create capital reserve funds, and every time they do Warren articles for budget, they can put money aside out of their year-end fund balance into that fund for future purposes. It would be the same, but you'd have to do it through the city.
Okay, thanks.
So not, not right now, but yes, you can do that.
Okay.
And we raised the exact same question, we had the exact same conversation, we thought about it, was what we could do now. I think the operating budget is the best way to go in terms of advantages over building an endowment or a special fund, but it was a good question.
Remember Prescott, good? Anything? No questions? Oh, hold on, put on your microphone.
I personally think that the idea of a trust is good for a district like ours that has such high priorities during the school year that might be more related to academic outcomes and student achievement and student wellness, if you will.
Yeah, I think that since I've kind of like went with the website and with kind of our marketing, I think I'm, I think I'm looking to kind of split, split the difference a little bit on the funds for the website, so like the public kind of knows, and again, my constituents know of like Maggie, we're, you know, we hear, I hear, we don't have enough, we don't have enough to give to these students, you know, we don't have enough instruments, we don't have enough, you know, they don't have food to, you know, they don't have money to eat, you know, when they go into games and things like that. So I'm kind of looking for the middle of the road of half of 30 or half of 25 to have half of that be for the website and the other half kind of be more for what else can we, what else can we buy to bolster the student-facing extracurriculars for athletics and the arts? And to ask for that, I think just something there with appointed, I don't know what that would be, but to, I'm sure, I'm sure the people at the helm would know what that could be. And I think that from knowing Summersworth and the students' response of like, I don't feel like we're, we don't have enough money for stuff that other schools have. I feel like half of that, I feel like the website is very content, updating needed, not functionality necessarily. I think it's the content that needs to be updated. I think that the imaging needs to be updated, but I don't think like a full overhaul. And then the other thing I was hesitant on, website overhauls take a lot of time and bandwidth of people to do, right? A website redesign of our, you know, would involve our leadership at some point to be like, you know, how do we like this? And maybe even the board. So that capacity too, I have concern of, because we have so much, we have probably the most in the Seacoast that's on our plate for our strategic plan and what we're going forward with, so I have a capacity concern. Yep.
Sorry, I do have another question. Content-wise, who do we generally have doing the content on the website? Because my question would be, I see your point, Maggie, I'm wondering if it is the functionality of the website that gets in the way of effectively managing the content, right? Like if you have a not-user-friendly situation, that's the technical term, I don't know, like, is that preventing people from being able to update content?
And let me just give a pre, a historical thing. This is School Messenger made, and I publicly said, how are we going to maintain it? And in an email, and I can share it, was like, oh, we're going to give training to staff, and it's through PowerSchool, so it's double, it's the same company, I think, that PowerSchool acquired, School Messenger, and I believe that's what we use for our messaging. So it was like, that's why we went with this, this one. So that, I don't know about the functionality of updating, but it was asked and like documented, hey, how do we, how do we, if we need to change it, how do we do that? And part of it was training staff, and then, hey, this is part of PowerSchool, so they're interrelated.
I just have a question. Is there a staff member at the SAU who manages the website? Like a communications manager or?
No. The, in July of last summer, I spent a lot of time with two or three staff just trying to better understand the mechanics of what we can move around, what we couldn't move around, what kind of support we had. And we determined pretty quickly that we didn't really have the, it was more complicated than it should be. The support that was required was more than we anticipated, and nobody had the skillset to kind of reestablish some basic things. Generally, website companies sell you complicated websites that are complicated to manage and require ongoing contracts, so it's not, to have quality, powerful imaging and messaging and simplicity of certain school administrators and someone at the SAU office, we have nobody for communications, we just kind of sort those funds, would be our aim, would be our aim, which is just not where we are with the current site.
Jameson?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be, sometimes I struggle with being diplomatic. I'm gonna try to be diplomatic. I am wondering about the functionality of that and if it does need to be simplified, because I do vividly remember the one year that I had to use PowerSchool to enter report card grades. I'm just gonna say that gently, that it's, really sticks out for me in terms of how easy it was not to enter the report card grades, just gently. And then I just, I do, I do wonder, and so I think your question raised in 2021 was very valid, and I, I wonder if, if maybe that not having gone answered has caused some, some current difficulties, if that makes sense.
Which question? Which, just so I'm the.
Well, just like the, the piece about like the, the training and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it would be a whole, I mean, PowerSchool and to, and that would be hesitant, I would be hesitant to comment on like what, how it is, because I'm, I'm as a parent outward with PowerSchool, but it's such the behemoth of what people use. I think that a lot of folks use it, but for us to kind of say which one would be more useful, it is still connected with School Messenger, so that, that's still a, that's still a relationship. I just think that it's, the content of it is really the, I see as the, as the issue rather than a functionality. I think if there is a functionality issue, School Messenger should, and PowerSchool should have, I'm sure we have contracts to pay them.
I think though, the School Messenger is just for the communications piece, the website itself, when we upload, I believe the website company that we did was Entrado. I don't believe it's PowerSchool. We don't go into PowerSchool to post, you go into the website to post, so.
The School Messenger presence is on it.
Yeah, School Messenger is the, it's linked to the website, but I'm not sure that, I think the company was Entrado was who we did the website through.
Can we ask for that contract or however we're engaging with this, you know, I don't even know if it's a multi-year thing or something like that, just to kind of get the details on that? And really, it's, it's, again, it's the, it's the focus of like updating, you know, information in there and having that dedicated training for it, and all that stuff is really important. I think part of it too is imagery too, I think the imagery needs to be, be part of it. So for the website, right, I don't think website companies come out and take photographs, that would be a nice perk, but I think that part of it is the website updating, even though I feel like those can, that can get time-consuming, but also just the, our, our marketing presence, our photos, photos of the students up in the halls in our schools. And I would, I would make a motion to split this in half, to have half be the website and the other half to be for multi-year focus on athletic and the arts purchases for our students across the district.
Katie, can, to the, and it wouldn't necessarily, we could, I would propose a consideration for what we, how we could amend the memo on the district site and spend less money. Doesn't necessarily have to be half, because we're under the 125 right now, so finding 5,000 or 10,000, how would a motion, and with what specificity would it need to be framed in order to be approved at this meeting and, and clear with audit and everything else?
I mean, we'd have to have like a not-to-exceed number, first of all. I mean, we can't really leave it open-ended to be like just something to purchase for arts, or it would have to be something concrete, I think, more like an instrument. It can't really be paying for fees for next year. It can't be next year's expenses that we pay with last year's money, so it would have to be something that, like a piece of equipment or a capital expenditure that they need something.
Okay.
It can't just be like, we're going to set aside this money to, for them to use for, I don't know, it would have to be something specific.
Equipment, multi-year equipment that can be used throughout the years, like, and again, not in the, not in the, I wouldn't, I'm not in the role to know exactly the people that are doing it. I'm in the role enough to know that it's needed, and people are telling me often that we need, we need, we have, things don't work, and I just wanted up to $15,000 of equipment for athletics and the arts to be determined by the folks that use it, you know, by our directors and our coaches and our, in there. I know it's, it's just.
I mean, I will say they each just got $2,000 donation for the arts. The high school is the only one that has spent it so far, so the other buildings still have that 2,000 to spend from the festival association, that donation that came in as well. So if there's things that people need, we can tap into those funds as well.
From a technical perspective, a motion tonight to allocate up to X dollars to be spent using end-of-year balance in the next, you know, to be.
Yeah, we have to be, yeah, it has to be spent within the next, you know, a few months, couple of months.
On arts and athletic gear and equipment, multi-year use, period. No specificity beyond that, would that be acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, and then we would report back.
That sounds right, yeah. What we bought, yes.
Report back, this is what.
And again, if I don't hear from anybody and get any concrete things to purchase, that money will go back.
Correct, yeah.
Yep.
But that would be acceptable.
Yeah.
And I would propose for the districts over there, you know, we've got the list and the memo in front of us, so we could consider potentially an amendment to spend up to $15,000. As kind of outlined, and we can run through that. Could I amend for the board's consideration, district website overhaul revamp and strategic planning, strategic communications materials, not year-to-year materials, but a reorganized strategic communications materials, not to exceed 15,000?
Yeah, 15 or 20, yeah.
There would go 20. If we did 20 and 15, Katie, I think that puts us somewhere around 105 or 110.
Not to exceed, yeah, makes sense.
Yep.
Is that, and then, so it would be basically the list you have in front of us with the district website overhaul amended to be district website revamp and strategic planning materials, you know, one-time reorganization of those materials, not to exceed 20,000, and add a new line item for athletic and arts equipment and gear, multi-year use as identified in the next weeks, not to exceed 15,000.
And then I can reach out to the folks that are in those departments and see what we can.
Anyone want to take a stab at that? Should I try? Should I try with the motion? All right. I motion to clarify and amend the recommendation for the website to include a strategic communications materials, not to exceed $20,000. Is that a simplified version? Is there a second? And any?
A second?
There's going to be two motions, this is my first one. Yeah. Any, yeah, any discussion on this motion, kind of what it is?
You're going to do a second motion?
I'm, yeah, this is, I want to do another one, yeah. So this is for the website materials, imaging, I would think would be a part of it, communications, kind of tighten the communications to our community, if that, if that's School Messenger or another way, but really getting communications and coming to our website and getting the communications. We've been asked for communications, I've been, I'll say, I've been asked, people have come to the board members, how can we get good communication to our community members, even looking at Summersworth and our current families and community members? That's kind of the deal. So first and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all right, that motion passes. The second is to allocate upwards of $15,000 to athletic and arts equipment, multi-year equipment to be purchased in the next, very soon, by September 1st, is it? By September 1st, to benefit our students' mind, body and soul. Wait, a second. Okay, any discussion about this one? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all right, thank you.
And I just want to be really clear on the, the arts and athletic needs are greater than that, so this won't. So this, this won't be an issue. It's gonna be communication. And we will make sure that you get a crystal clear reporting for the public on exactly what was spent. So folks understand that this was, these were, the tricky part is, it's July and we're like, oh, wait a minute, so we've got some money. And it's just gonna be a matter of prioritizing, but I just want to assure everybody involved, the needs are there.
We'll have an update in August and.
Yes, the August meeting and we'll.
I also need the motion to approve the not to exceed the, yeah.
Um, sorry, so, one second. All right, looking for a motion, do you want the, the, the exact amount? Or do you want the, a motion to?
I think you added what? Yeah.
110, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Would 110 be 115? Okay, just to be, all right. Looking, yeah, I know, I don't want to limit anything, but I think your judgment, excuse me, is perfectly fine on this. I just don't want to make it, have to come back in for another one. No, I'll come back in for another meeting. Making a motion, I'd like to make a motion to accept the end-of-year expenditures as presented, including the previous two motions, in an amount not to exceed $115,000. Do I have a second on that? All right, any discussion on this? Clarity? Nope, okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye? Aye, thank you. All right. Thank you, good.
Thanks, everybody.
Moving on?
Yep.
Moving on to 3.2, the consideration and vote on joining the prospective lawsuit against New Hampshire related to the anti-DEI legislation included in House Bill 2.
And I, and I do appreciate the, the vote there. And we will, again, I just want to stress that everything that we spend will come back to everybody and be public in detail. And we're very fortunate to be able to do things that we need to be able to do. We would either have tabled or used next year's budget, so that's very helpful. I struggle for how to summarize, so you've gotten the materials on House Bill 2. Particularly, you know, it was 100-plus pages. Seven pages that were most pertinent to the anti-DEI legislation were included in your packet. And highlighted were the sections that were most pertinent. You also, as school board members, received the confidential brief prepared by the American Civil Liberties Union. So just to back us up a little bit, there is a prospective lawsuit. The lawsuit that we considered earlier this year against the US Department of Education was a lawsuit that was already in motion, and what we were considering was joining it. Just to be clear, this is not a lawsuit that's already in motion. It's a prospective lawsuit that the American Civil Liberties Union is behind and organizing. I can tell you that all four school districts, ours included, that were part of the first, are considering or in various stages of that right now. And we can't really share more publicly at this point because, have they announced? It's in the public minutes, yeah. So we've got, you know, it wouldn't be surprising if we saw these, all these districts participate. But we, that's all coming together now. And the lawsuit's not filed yet, just to be crystal clear. The, the best I could do to summarize this is that it is the Dear Colleagues Letter from the US Department of Education that we're already suing with the National Education Association and other, three other school districts in New Hampshire, one other school district in New England. And that will be, the next decision on that will be in August. It is basically the same rationale. And the New Hampshire legislation, I would argue, is fundamentally deeper and worse and puts the threat from the commissioner, then Commissioner of Education that we received a few weeks ago was loss of all public funding. I assume that means state public funding, but he did not specify. Oh, yeah, all state funding, federal would be separate. So we're roughly, it varies from year to year, $1 to $2 million in federal funding at stake through the first lawsuit and approximately $11 million at stake through this lawsuit, which is about 30% of our current school budget. Similar vague and ambiguous language about DEI, in some cases more precise. And the last thing I'll say, and then I'll just leave it to questions too, is where the federal Dear Colleagues Letter referred to the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and protected populations as sort of guiding what they would see as DEI. The New Hampshire legislation refers to a state RSA, which is a parallel anti-discriminatory, anti-discrimination law to the Civil Rights Act of 1964, but specifically includes individuals with disabilities. The Boston Globe ran an article in mid-June, when this was still in the works, suggesting that New Hampshire was considering a state law that would effectively declare special education programming DEI and thus illegal. And it went through. So now we have in front of us a, you know, basically seek, the, seeking demographic outcomes with targeted populations, the idea that we would offer programs for poor students or immigrant students or students who don't speak English as a first language, and we would seek to improve their educational outcomes as a whole and not just treat them as individuals, but offer ESOL programs. For example, yeah, yeah.
Jameson, you had a question?
Yeah.
I was just curious if that violates the Americans with Disabilities Act?
I think that if in fact they're saying special education is a DEI program and thus illegal, it violates a lot of state and federal laws. So in terms of ambiguity and vagueness, but yes, that's, the gist of it is anything we do to seek outcomes among populations, students with disabilities included, would be perceived as DEI. So the, the, it's beyond troubling.
Yeah, I think I would just add that, like beyond special education, it also sounds like therefore then it targets Section 504 as well, which is a large portion of students.
Does that fall under special education when 504 under, like legally?
It doesn't fall under IDEA. It's a separate federal law that, but if you're referring to people with disabilities as being part of that protected class, which I have to look at the statute again, but if you're referring to that as disabilities, then 504 protects students with disabilities that don't require special education.
And what was the law in New Hampshire, I struggle to keep up sometimes, that made the special education kind of, that you mentioned earlier, John, do you remember what the, what law that was that was newly passed? Just earlier this, yeah, just like a couple of minutes ago? The Boston Globe article running the, in, in, that New Hampshire was considering.
It was this.
It's this one.
It was this.
So House Bill 2, if you can just clarify, I'm, I'm, I'm out of the loop on like how, I'm just, it's, 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 it's more than vague and I can't even, I can't translate sometimes what this even means.
No, I was just drawing attention to the fact that it's not just speculative at this point. The guidance would be helpful and the state could just simply tell us that special education is now illegal. They're not, but the, not, you know, so it's not just a superintendent in Summersworth suggesting. My goodness, it seems like this law is suggesting that special education is an illegal DEI program. The Boston Globe in mid-June, when the bill was being considered, ran an article basically saying, hey, everybody, what's going on here? And probably, you know, there's so many, so much happening in Concord right now that it was probably like, oh, okay, here's, now let's look at this. And, but it went through. It went through the House, it went through the Senate. It was signed by the governor as the Boston Globe presented the, the concern there. By referring to the RSA that includes individuals with disabilities, it effectively bundles special education into, hey, you can't treat these kids differently, and that's DEI. And we will take away all your funding if you do anything that is DEI. The one last thing I want to mention that's different than the federal piece of legislation is that the state is requiring our business administrator with support to, to look at everybody we contract with, everybody we contract with, to make sure that none of those organizations are either compelled by us or are choosing to be DEI in terms of however they do their business or however they do their hiring or however they subcontract.
And so that's, that's private. Those are private companies that you would contract with, including potentially individuals that the government is trying to control around their hiring practices or support of anyone. Wow, sounds like big government, honestly, but.
So, any questions or anything?
I can, I can add.
Well, we should probably speak.
I was gonna add one important thing that'd just be helpful.
Yeah, go ahead.
Process-wise, I just want to assure everybody, because I know one of the reservations that was brought up before is do we have the capacity to participate in a lawsuit like this? What does it mean for central office leadership staff? What does it mean for the school board? What does it mean for teachers? You know, and the ACLU said it's gonna require a little bit of superintendent time and nothing else. And that is what the first suit has in fact presented. And not only that, the benefit of being part of this suit is we are getting legal assistance, the best legal assistance arguably around, at no cost. So not only do we not spend anything to participate in this lawsuit, not only are we defending our right to, whether you consider it a right or a privilege or earn, not only are we looking to secure for the long-term our federal dollars and our state dollars, given what's at risk, but I think we're doing the right thing for the greater good on behalf of our community, but also, most importantly, for Summersworth.
I mean, I personally, as a special educator, also as a human, also as a, just, I, this is just, I feel like this is an opportunity to continue to stand and represent and I don't even have words, but like, it's just, I have no problem standing up for, for people. So, I mean, if, I would love to motion if we're ready.
Go for it. I think it's just to, to, I think once we're here, you have no, you don't, you're not required, but to say something like you're saying why, what, what you're saying kind of a little bit of substance, but of course.
Right, it's a no-brainer. Like, I mean, I grew up in Iowa, visited institution, or de, museums of institutions. It's what drove me into special education was seeing how people with autism were treated in, you know, the early Americas. And like having kids chained to walls and, you know, on mattresses, and that's extreme. But like also, special education is necessary because humans are diverse and incredible and we need to like have that opportunity. We also need to stand up just for the diversity of, of, like humanity, right? Like race, color, sexual orientation, gender identity, all of this stuff, right? So like, I mean, I could go down my list. However, I would just like to motion that we stand with the lawsuit and that we join the law, the prospective lawsuit that the ACLU is proposing.
Okay, we have a second? Okay, discussion or comments? I encourage them a little bit, just to.
Yeah, I think as the third most diverse school district in the state, we do not only rely on diversity and equity and inclusion. We like are diversity, equity, and inclusion in Summersworth. And I think HB2 is a real threat to our state funding. And anything we can do to protect that is a step we should take.
Okay. Board Member Jameson?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I agree. I support joining it. I am baffled that, I think like you pointed out, John, that they do have the opportunity to say it doesn't include special education. And like, even if that's a mistake that they made, like that's embarrassing for them. And like, I think it's probably part of, because I was watching a lot of bills. I think it's probably part of the, the flood of, of bills that this went undetected. But yeah, we absolutely need to stand up against.
Yeah.
This, yeah.
What would it look like if we did not receive that is about 1, 1 to 2 million for this at stake? Or the threat of the funding at stake? Is it about?
11 million.
11 million? Okay, so if, I don't know how to follow this. This doesn't make any sense. Like, I, I read this and it's so vague, you know, I wouldn't, and I reread it, it is just, it is ambiguous to know, right? If I, if I said, if something was diverse, equal, or you included some, someone, right? As a board member or one of our staff, faculty, or anyone, I don't even know how someone would follow this. How would we, what would we, what would $11 million having to reduce in this district look like?
The million plus from the federal government and the approximate $11 million, if you conclude both of those together, is a third of our budget. So it would, it would crush. It would absolutely crush the district. That's.
Do you think, do we think that we could even operate?
We would have an obligation to operate, but what a school district would look like at, with that expenditure, either renegotiating collective bargaining agreements and salaries to the point where a lot of staff and teachers that wanted to stay in Summersworth would have no choice but to leave, what class sizes would look like. We already have trouble filling par educator positions as it is.
Yeah.
I think this, you know, that, that kind of loss is borderline existential in terms of just can we operate public schools, period? We would have an obligation to, but it would not look good.
All right.
Thankfully, I mean, all schools in New Hampshire are like under the same threat. So I think there's a lot of opportunity and coalition building with our fellow board members across the state and other districts that are gonna join. Because we're not the only district that would have to close if we lost the funds from the state.
Yeah, all right. All right, thank you. Thank you for the perspective. All right, we have a motion on the table to join the prospective lawsuit against this, is it, should I say, New Hampshire, the state of New Hampshire? And against the anti-DEI legislation that was included in House Bill 2. All in favor, say aye? Aye, aye, okay. It's passed. All right, well, future meeting dates. Anything else for that?
Yeah, well, we won't make any announcement. Obviously, this is a public meeting, but next steps will be led by the lawyers involved in the prospective suit. So that we'll see what happens there. If the suit materializes, we should expect that would happen probably within the next week to 10 days. And information about other districts that are joining will all be forthcoming, I think, very quickly. And Oyster River, you said it already has, it's already in a public meeting minutes, but they want to make an announcement on their own. I think there'll be an organized announcement together, coming within the next few days. And we'll be able to report back to the public and via website and other communications where things stand so that everybody can follow. But certainly at our first school board meeting of the new year in late August, I think the 29th.
And that's our next meeting, is August 26th. We start at 6:00 PM now. We start earlier. So that's our next scheduled meeting, and then the September 9th and 23rd to start off the new year. Any comments by visitors this evening? Give the opportunity. You have three minutes, upwards of five. Any comments by board members this evening? Any final comments? Yes.
I believe that we had a new commissioner sworn in. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the commissioner, the former commissioner, for his unique contributions to education in New Hampshire and wish him all the best in whatever field he chooses next. Best wishes.
I would actually like to, and I, I'll figure out how to kind of do this, but to welcome the new commissioner, Kaitlin Davis, as a board. I will get a larger card if you would so wish. Just get in contact with me and I'll swing by your house and kind of say thank you. I think there's, I'm just really hopeful of this new commissioner and would like to just welcome, welcome them aboard, welcome Kaitlin aboard and collaborate in any way future. So that was just one thing. I didn't want to take anyone else's. Comments? Comments? Going once, going twice? Okay. That's it, we have no non-public. We need paraprofessionals, please. And I think we have a Ward 4 board member coming to the table. So, yeah, yeah. Ward 4. Yeah, just spoke to someone today, so filling it out. Apply to our district. We are amazing. I'm looking for a, a motion to adjourn at 6:24.
I would motion to adjourn at 6:24.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you all. That was good.